Which is why I am following the meeting in order. Thank you for starting the recording. And I think first, we're going to do off the top our public participation announcements and meeting standards, but please, anybody, staff, anyone, other planning board members interrupt me if I go off the rails at any point, please let me know.
So should I go ahead with the rules?
Please proceed with the rules of engagement, Vivian, unless I've forgotten something else that happens before that.
I think it's okay. Go ahead and Devin, I'll pull up the slides. Great. Thank you, Lisa, the chair tonight. Thanks, everyone from the public for joining us. We really do appreciate you taking your time to attend planning board meetings. My name is Vivian and my role in these meetings is to facilitate the public engagement parts and the rules I am sharing are in place to help us achieve a balance between transparency with community members and security that minimizes disruptions. So we'll start with open comments from community members as soon as I finish reading these. And then there's a public hearing item later in the agenda. So we want everyone to know that the city is really striving into a vision co-created by city staff and community for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations and that we worked with our community to develop these expectations. And the vision is really designed to promote free conversation and dialogue, while also recognizing that we want to make sure everyone who participates feels safe and welcome. And we want to ensure we make space for different viewpoints in our meetings because we believe it leads to more informed decision making. Next slide, please, Devin. And we have more information on our website about this productive atmospheres vision. And I'm just going to narrow in on what we need to note for tonight's planning board meeting. There's a number of rules of decorum that are found in the Boulder Revised Code. And we have some general guidelines that are advisory in nature to share with everybody here tonight. First, we ask that all remarks and testimonies raised tonight be related to city business. We will not allow any participant to make threats or use any other forms of intimidation against any person in the session. Obscenities, racial epithets, and other speech and behavior that disrupts the meeting or otherwise makes it impossible for us to continue in the moment is prohibited. And we do also ask that participants identify themselves by the name they are commonly known by. And to please display your first and last name if you would like to speak during open comment or public hearing. Next slide. We're in the Zoom webinar. Participants from the public to speak at designated times, but we are unable to turn on video for community members because of security concerns in the Zoom platform. There's no pre-existing list to sign up and speak today at the designated times. So you can let us know by raising your virtual hand. If you'd like to speak when we call on the public. So you'll see a couple of different ways to do this. At the very bottom of your screen, you should see a horizontal menu with three clickable items. And if you click on the hand icon, it'll raise a hand next to your name. I will note to call on you. If you have an expanded menu, you can also get to the raised hand icon by clicking on reactions. And I'll monitor to see if anybody is joining us by phone, write some instructions if needed. So again, this open comment coming up is a chance to speak about things not on the agenda tonight. And just letting you know that the Q and A function can be used if you're having some technical difficulties or process-related questions, but not to have side chats about content related to agenda items. Thanks again for joining us tonight. And if you would like to speak during open comments, please go ahead and raise your hand and I will call on you.
Thank you, Vivian. So just to reiterate that, that was perfect, but this is an opportunity for anyone from the public who wishes to comment on items that are not on the agenda. We have one public hearing item, which is a concept plan review and comment request for proposal to develop thirty-one twenty-five thirty-fourth Street with forty-four permanently affordable townhouse units. So we'd ask that you not comment on that and you'll have an opportunity to later. But this is public participation for any other items. So please, as Vivian said, raise your hand if you'd like to speak.
And I do not see any hands raised right now, so.
Great, thank you, Vivian. I think our next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. So these are draft planning board minutes from July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Did everyone have the chance to comment? Who wished to comment? Are folks prepared to vote on those? All right, just to keep things moving, I'll go ahead and move to approve the planning board minutes from July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a second? Thank you. Seconded by Kurt Nordback. And I'll do roll call. Kurt?
Yes.
Georgie?
Yes.
ML?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
And I am a yes. All right, those are only minutes for tonight. We next have two call-up items. The first is an amendment to the Shining Mountain Waldorf School Phase Two Site Plan and Locust Neighborhood Design Guidelines to allow for subdivision of the approved townhome lot into seventeen individual townhome lots and a man phasing requirements for the single-family lots. Forgive me, staff and members, is there anything else we need to say or do we just open it for any questions that folks have or anyone who wants to call that up?
That's right. Yeah, questions, anybody has a motion.
Cool. So any questions to staff, please ask those now. ML, go ahead.
Thank you, Lisa. So I have, I just have a couple of questions. One of the requests is to change the scheduling of the construction. Is there a reason that it was originally scheduled the way it is? A compelling reason that it was originally scheduled the way it is?
You know, it's, it's a little unclear. The original requirement for the phasing of the single-family homes is only found in the design guidelines that were adopted. It's kind of just a blurb in the design guidelines that require them to be built in blocks of four homes at a time, starting on the west and moving east. So we talked about it as staff and there, there may have been some reasoning, thinking that it would create kind of a buffer between future construction sites and the existing single-family homes to the west. But according to the applicant, it's, it essentially makes the, the construction, timing, phasing, and financing a lot more complicated to have to follow that particular order.
So there were no identified impacts or conflicts with the existing houses, adjacent houses in the neighborhood that came to your attention?
Not in the record, not in the approval record, no.
Okay. And then the second question I have, I'm looking at the two figures, one, the approved one and then the proposed one. And there are no trees on the proposed one. Is that just an oversight?
Yeah, that, that may have just been, I think, I think that was an open space plan that I included in the memo. And really, I was just trying to show that the overall site layout wasn't changing except for the new lot lines. But the landscaping is not changing. One of the, the minor changes is removal of dwarf trees. There's like individual dwarf trees that are on the lots that they're proposing to remove and replace with other shrubs and other landscaping. But other than that, no, none of the, there, there are no changes to the landscaping plan.
Okay, so all those big trees that are shown are essentially still proposed, they're just not on the draw.
Correct.
Cool. Thank you so much. I have no need to call this up. Thank you.
All right. Does anyone else have any questions or desire to call this item up? All right. Moving forward, our second call-up item is a minor subdivision of the existing thirty thousand three hundred and forty-six square foot property at twenty-one ninety-eight Upland into two lots. Falling subdivision lot one will be fifteen thousand one hundred and fifty-seven square feet and lot two fifteen thousand one hundred and eighty-nine square feet. There will also be dedication of a ten-foot wide utility easement. Known modifications lamp is banned use code are requested. Does anyone have questions or desire to call up that item? Yes, Kurt?
Just a quick confirmation, if the, what's currently proposed under zoning for affordable housing is approved, the minimum lot size in this zone would go down to seventy-five hundred square feet, right? And so in theory, i-if, if the applicant were to wait, this could become four lots. Is that correct?
Yeah, I believe it is.
Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to confirm.
Sure. Good question.
Any further questions or desire to call up this item? All right. I think we'll proceed on to our single public hearing item for tonight. This is a concept plan review and comment request. And again, I'll just emphasize concept plan review. We're not voting, but we are giving feedback for a proposal to develop thirty-one twenty-five thirty-fourth Street with forty, forty-four permanently affordable townhouse units. Before staff goes into their full presentation, we as a board need to decide if we're comfortable with noticing requirements and how that unfolded. So staff's going to speak to that briefly. We'll have a chance to ask questions and then take a vote on how we wish to proceed.
All right, thank you. Can you all see the presentation view? Are you guys still seeing my notes? Okay. So I'm just going to do one slide and then I'll get into the, the noticing. So good evening, planning board members. As you just said, this is a, a public hearing for a concept plan review at thirty-one twenty-five thirty-fourth Street. So I'll go over the concept plan and purpose, the public notification, which we need to discuss, planning context, project background, summary of the proposed project and key issues. So the concept plan and purpose, as you all know, is to review a general development plan, including arrangement of uses, land uses, circulation, alternative transportation, architecture, environmental preservation. This process is intended to give the applicant comments from the public, city staff, and the planning board early in the process, and there is no formal action required by the planning board tonight. So for public notification, written notice was sent to property owners within six hundred feet. Notice was also posted on the property. Staff received inquiries from several neighboring property owners, as well as some preliminary comments. One neighbor expressed general support for the proposed project, and several neighbors have since expressed concerns over potential noise and lighting impacts, as well as concerns over loss of existing mature trees on the north side of the site. So the, the September nineteenth meeting was noticed in news from City Hall on Sunday, September tenth. But the public hearing agenda title for thirty-one twenty-five thirty-fourth Street did not make it into the classified ads. So the board will have to make a finding whether or not the defect in notice impaired the surrounding property owner's ability to participate in the review process. If the board finds that the surrounding property owner's ability has not been so impaired, the board may hold the hearing. But if the board finds that the ability to participate in the review process has been impaired, the board would then have to continue the item for at least ten days. So if you guys would like to make a decision on that right now before I proceed, that would be great.
All right. Does anyone have questions? Yes, ML, go ahead.
Do we have legal advice about this?
I would defer to Hella.
Yeah, the, the language that Chandler put on the screen here is, is what the code essentially says. It says this, if there's a minor defect in notice, then it shouldn't invalidate an action of the board. And in this case, you're just holding a hearing. And if any defect is brought to the attention of the board prior to the hearing or at the hearing, then the board has to make this finding that Chandler put on the screen. And if you find then the fact that the ten-day notice that's typically required under the code for this particular hearing on this item impaired the ability of neighboring property owners to participate, then you would have to continue the item for at least ten days. And if you find that, then I would recommend that it be set out so far that the notice can be given as anticipated in the, in the code. But if you find that it was only a minor error and there were other communications that allowed surrounding property owners to participate, then you can make a finding that it didn't impair property owner's ability to participate and continue tonight.
And let me just interrupt, sorry, Hella. This, I think, is not quite as comprehensive as the email we received because it was then noticed this past weekend, right, which didn't meet the ten-day requirement. It was, it was noticed, but without the hearing agenda title, so the meeting was noticed. And then it was noticed with the hearing agenda title, but not ten days.
That's, yeah, in the last, last weekend, there was a notice in the paper that had that notified about this particular item and that that hearing would be today, but two days before the hearing versus ten.
Laura?
Just a couple of questions. When you say that, that agenda title did not make it into the classified ads, that's the classified ads of what? Is that a newspaper? Is that some city publication?
It's the newspaper.
Yeah, it's the Daily Camera.
The Daily Camera, okay.
And that's where the particular agenda items are typically, typically posted.
Okay. It, it seems like there was definitely effective outreach to Arborwood because we got a notice from their HOA, as well as several individual members. I am wondering about the other neighboring property owners, the San Juan del Centro and the Orchard Grove Mobile Home Park. Was there any particular outreach to those, those folks?
They, they received mailed notice, which is the standard. So we create a mailing list for all property owners within six hundred feet of the site, and we send that out right when the application comes in. So that's how the Arborwood folks were initially noticed and contacted me. And then I, I notified them of the hearing date. But I didn't receive any comments from San Juan del Centro or the Orchard Grove folks, but they did receive mailed notice.
Okay. I, I will just say for my part, it seems like that direct mailed notice to those property owners is probably more likely to catch their attention than a notice in the classified ads. So I am comfortable proceeding with the hearing tonight.
And this noticing requirement is based on the requirement in state law? Is that correct?
It's a noticing requirement under the Boulder Revised Code for concept plans.
Ah, it's, so it's strictly city code, okay. And so, so city code refers to the surrounding property owners?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Well, yeah, I, I agree with Laura that this seems like a minor defect.
Would anyone else like to comment or weigh in before, I, I'll say something shortly, but I want to give anyone else who wants to weigh in an opportunity.
Yeah, I, I, I read what staff had sent previously and understand what we're talking about here. I guess from my perspective, as much as I want to go through things, I don't understand even a minor defect of, of avoiding code for noticing meetings to the extent that someone would feel it or didn't get noticed that the way that, the way that we've outlined in the code gives me some pause because I always believe that public participation in these things is, is, is the absolute right thing to do. So the question is, from perspective, why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we notice this properly and move forward when it's noticed properly? I just, even if it's minor, what, what's the, what's the concern? Why wouldn't we just do this appropriately when, you know, a hundred percent? I don't know who can answer that, but I, I just, I don't, no one's giving any kind of valid reason to move this forward. If we haven't noticed this properly as a city, why shouldn't this just be punted until it's, until it's noticed properly?
Would anyone from staff like to weigh, weigh in on, on the reasons why you wish to keep it on the agenda and kind of move forward?
I mean, I think it's the, the fact that it's a concept plan, that any subsequent application would need to come back to the board for a review, which would then be noticed appropriately. I think we felt since the site was posted and the direct mailing went out that we were comfortable moving forward and having the advisory concept plan hearing. But you know, again, certainly the board can make different findings other than, you know, the way staff has viewed it.
Yeah, I guess Charles is, the, my question is more, if we haven't noticed it properly thoroughly, even if it's minor, what's the, like, what's the harm? What's the harm in moving this to some other date? Beyond just kind of all of our time being sort of.
Yeah, I mean, sure, beyond the logistics, really nothing. You know, and I think maybe the applicant would, you know, assert that, you know, they'd like to get going on their, their site review application and they're, you know, would like to get the feedback from planning board and you know, potentially council recognizing that it's a BHP project, but you know, ultimately, George, I don't think that there is any real harm.
Any further comment? Yes, ML.
Um, it seems to me that this information that's up on the screen and that Hella referred to as well, that there's a little bit of more nuance to the, it's not just black and white. Well, it didn't get noticed, so we don't really, you know, the thing to do is just to notice it properly. It sounds like because there are not just the noticing in the paper, but there's the mailing and any other outreach that was done. It's one of many meanings to inform the surrounding neighborhood that was compromised. And I, I think that that's what this sentence or paragraph gives us is the opportunity to say, well, okay. One of many, many ways of letting people know was, was compromised. We did put a notice that was only two days. So I, I don't think, I don't have a problem moving forward with it. I understand what George is saying. But I think that because there are kind of other opportunities that have been taken, I don't see that it has impaired surrounding owners' ability to participate. So I will be agreeing with, with Laura. Thank you.
Thank you, ML. Anyone else before I weigh in? Looking for hands back and forth. Um, yeah, I think, I think Georgie's point's a good one and I'm, I'm also going to fall on the side of ML and Laura. I think because it's a concept review and because of the other forms of notice and also as much as I love old newspapers, Daily Camera is behind a paywall. So you know, I, I understand why that's legally how we do it and that's written into the code, but ultimately, I think I find other forms of noticing, including direct mail, to be more informative and more inclusive. That said, I, I do see kind of a wiggly space there and within myself, which is if this weren't a concept review, if this wasn't coming back and if we're a really controversial project, I think I would be saying we absolutely cannot be hearing this. So I, I think that's kind of an interesting nuance in my own reaction and how I'm, I'm going to be voting on this particular decision. Yeah, so that's kind of where I'm at. Does anyone have anything else they'd like to say before I call a vote? Okay, let me make sure I can introduce this language. Yes, go ahead, Hella, please.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that you formulate it as a motion.
I will. Yeah, I'm about to. Don't worry. Okay, so I move that planning board make a finding that the defect, minor defect in notice did not impair the surrounding property owner's ability to participate in the review process. Are you happy with that, Hella? Okay. Thank you, ML. All right, I will now call a roll call vote. Georgie?
No.
ML?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
And I will also be a yes. So we will proceed with this item, the public hearing item. And again, I'll reiterate for any members of the public who are concerned by that. First, I apologize that you're concerned by that. And secondly, I want to emphasize that this is concept plan review. You'll have multiple opportunities to weigh in. All right, Chandler, please proceed.
Okay, thank you. So the project site is located on Thirty-Fourth Street, north of Valmont Road. The site is bordered on the west and south by the Orchard Grove Mobile Home Park, San Juan del Centro to the east, and Arborwood Condominiums and the Howard Houston Park to the north. The site is roughly four point six acres in size and is currently vacant. The BVCP land use designation for the site is medium density residential, which is described here as being characterized by a variety of housing types. Medium density areas are generally situated near neighborhood and community shopping areas or along some of the major arterials of the city. Uses consist of a variety of housing types ranging from single-family detached to attached residential units such as townhomes, multiplexes, and some small lot detached units. Not necessarily all in one site. And the anticipated density is six to fourteen dwelling units per acre. In terms of the zoning on the site, as you can see here, the site is zoned RM1. And this is described in the land use code as medium density residential areas, which have been or are to be primarily used for attached residential development, where each unit generally has direct access to ground level and where complementary uses may be permitted under certain conditions. Attached residential units are allowed by right in RM1. Density in the RM1 zone is based on open space with a minimum requirement of three thousand square feet of open space for each unit. Therefore, forty-four units would require roughly a hundred and thirty-two thousand square feet of open space. And the maximum allowable height by right is thirty-five feet. So these are going to be some shots of the existing site and surrounding area. As I mentioned before, the site's roughly four point six acres and is currently vacant. And the site was originally part of the property known as three thousand three Valmont Road, twenty-seven acres of which was developed with the two hundred and sixteen unit Orchard Grove Mobile Home Park in nineteen sixty-three. In two thousand eight, city council approved rezoning the twenty-seven acre portion of the property containing the mobile home park, which are parcels A, B, and C to mobile home to address concerns about potential loss of affordable housing and the displacement of residents that could result from the redevelopment of the park. Parcel D, on which the project site is located, maintained a land use designation of medium density residential and is zoned RM1, as I mentioned before. Boulder Housing Partners, who is the applicant, purchased the subject property in twenty fifteen. And so this is a shot of San Juan del Centro looking east. The architectural character of the surrounding area is varied and eclectic with mobile homes to the south and west of the site. The two-story San Juan del Centro apartment complex immediately across Thirty-Fourth Street to the east. And the three-story Elizabethan-style Arborwood condominiums to the north, which you can kind of see here, and there'll be additional pictures in a second. The Boulder and White Rock Ditch occupies the northwest corner of the property. This is looking across the ditch towards Arborwood. There's dense vegetation and mature trees along both sides of the ditch channel, essentially enclosing the parcel along the west and north property lines. As a result, surrounding development to the north is not widely visible from the site. This is a shot of, on the north side of the ditch, still on the subject property, but looking across at the Arborwood condominiums, which are immediately adjacent to the site, lying to the north. And so the proposed project, as indicated in the applicant's plans, the proposal consists of forty-four townhouse units with a mixture of two-story, two-bedroom units and one-story, one-bedroom units. The proposal shows a series of fourplex layouts with each fourplex consisting of two one-story units flanking two two-story units. As noted in the applicant's written statement, which is included as attachment B in your packet, BHP is exploring modular construction in order to capitalize on repetition in the floor plans and allow for distinguishing features using exterior materials and color palette while decreasing construction time and cost, improving accuracy in construction and providing a sustainable building solution. The site, the proposal includes about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred and forty square feet of usable open space, which exceeds the minimum requirement for RM1. And they're showing sixty-five off-street parking spaces, which is consistent with parking requirements plus a little extra. So the current proposal shows two vehicular access points to the site off of Thirty-Fourth Street, which are designed to align with the adjacent entry points for San Juan del Centro. As noted in the staff review comments to the applicant, which are included as attachment C, transportation staff has recommended removing one of these proposed access points off Thirty-Fourth Street and coordinating with the neighboring property owner of Orchard Grove to potentially link the southwest area of the proposed site plan to the private street system within the mobile home park to the south. The proposal also includes new multi-use path connections and sidewalk connections through the site and largely preserves the ditch corridor. The site will have a variety of new sidewalk connections, as I just mentioned. It should be noted that, oh, sorry. Okay, so the sidewalk connections through the site and around the property include a new multi-use path connection along Thirty-Fourth Street and along the north side of the property to connect into a future multi-use path connection, which is shown in the transportation master plan. And that's shown in the dotted blue line right there. It should be noted that staff has received comments from residents of the neighboring Arborwood condominiums expressing concerns over the proposed multi-use path connection along the northern edge of the site. Specifically, residents are concerned about removal of existing vegetation and landscaping along the northern property boundary, as well as a lack of buffering between the proposed multi-use path connection and the adjacent homes to the north. This site plan also just shows kind of the open space layout. You can see that there's a centralized. Um, this site plan also just shows kind of the open space layout. You can see that there's a centralized community building. Um, as well as community open space areas and what they are showing as pollinator gardens. Um, as noted above, the proposal appears to exceed the minimum open space requirement for the RM one zone, which. With much of the usable open space being provided on the northwest corner of the site along the existing ditch and just south of there. Uh, the applicant has indicated that the existing ditch area and adjacent meadow will largely remain as is, but will be enhanced by some cleanup and restoration activities. To preserve and protect the natural area. Uh, while the application packet does not include specific architectural renderings, the applicant has provided numerous reference images. As well as detailed massing studies showing the intent behind the proposed massing. The applicant's written statement expresses a desire to provide a transition in massing um from the northwest to the south and east side of the building. Oh, okay. Um, so key issues for discussion. Um, key issue number one is is the proposed concept plan generally compatible with the goals, objectives and recommendations of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan? And key issue number two is, does planning board have feedback for the applicant on the conceptual site plan and building design? Um, so for key issue number one. Um, the proposed density of roughly ten point four units per acre is consistent with the density anticipated in the BVCP. And the proposed housing type, uh, which is attached residential, uh, will allow a variety of housing types in the surrounding area. Um, in addition, the fact that the forty-four units are intended to be one hundred percent permanently affordable housing managed by Boulder Housing Partners. Makes the project consistent with a number of BVCP policies related to housing, uh, including the ones listed here. Um, seven point oh one. Local solutions to affordable housing, uh, affordable housing goals, mixture of housing types. Balancing housing supply with employment base and integration in permanently affordable housing. Um, in addition, the proposal currently includes several features that appear to meet other comp plan policies, including. Um, compact development pattern, preservation and support for residential neighborhoods. Uh, improve mobility grid and connections. Wetland and rip- riparian protection, energy efficient building design and equitable transportation and transportation facilities in neighborhoods. Um, for key issue number two, which is whether the board has feedback on the conceptual site plan and building design. Uh, just listed some considerations here that are drawn from the site review criteria. Um, so for the discussion, it might be worth focusing on site design, um, street layout, access. Building sighting and orientation, public realm interface and parking location. Um, and in terms of building design, uh, focusing on materials, mass and scale and consistency with the character of the surrounding area. In terms of next steps, uh, following the concept review hearing, city council may vote to call the item up for a council hearing to provide additional feedback. Uh, the applicant will then either proceed with submitting a uh development review applications or may submit a second concept review application if they wish. Uh, site review application would be a staff level decision subject to call up by the planning board. And now we can move on to uh questions and discussion.
All right, um, let me reiterate one thing that I didn't say. I did not uh verbally call the vote, so it was a four-one vote that passed. I'm sure that's in the minutes, but just to. Read into the record. Um, questions for staff? Please raise your hands. Uh, Laura, sign your hand first. We go ahead.
Thank you. I have a couple. Um, uh, Chandler, could you show the image again that has the clubhouse on it? Shows the site layout?
Yes. Uh, will that work?
That one will work. Okay, so the clubhouse is that building that looks like it's in between the two drive access points. If we went down to one, one access point on Thirty Fourth Street, as staff are recommending. Would that clubhouse have to be raised or moved? Like, it looks like you can't drive through it. It looks like it's a one-story clubhouse that blocks that driveline. Am I looking at that correctly?
I think it would have to be moved, yes.
Okay.
And I can defer to the applicant when they're ready to discuss potential options for that.
Okay. Um, and then just two more quick questions related to um if the zoning for affordable housing. Um, ordinance passes as it is written. Would this site be able to have increased density? Would that change the open space requirements in this zone?
That's a good question. Um, Charles, do you know if we're proposing changes to the RM one open space standards?
Let me double check, and I will leave back.
Okay, thank you. And then another question related to the zoning for affordable housing um. Ordinance. I believe that that ordinance is currently written exempts projects that are one hundred percent affordable housing from site review. Would this project have been exempt from site review if that passes, or is there some other trigger? That would make this project have to have site review?
I mean, right now, the only trigger is just the minimum um lot size in the RM one zone, so. If that ordinance exempts projects that are a hundred percent affordable housing, then I think this would be exempt, yes.
Yeah, I'll double check on that too, Laura.
Okay, thank you. Those were my questions. I will pass to the next person.
Thank you, Laura. Um, Amel, go ahead.
Um, thank you. So, um, yeah, I think one of my questions, uh, initial questions is about density. Is this proposed plan maximizing the allowable density?
Uh, yes.
Okay, um, so staff was wanting to discourage the two uh entry points. Why?
Um, our um designing construction standards and the the land use code. Require um minimizing access basically, so they they say that you you're supposed to take one access point off the lowest category street. Um, so whenever we can, we try to um minimize access just to um manage, you know, traffic and circulation.
And um the suggestion was to make a through street to the project to the south of this. Has that project, is that possible, feasible? Is that something that can actually happen?
W- we're not sure. Um, it would really be up to the applicant to um have that discussion with the neighboring property owner, because those are private streets in the mobile home.
Right.
Um, so transportation staff just felt like it would improve um access and circulation to the mobile home park, because right now it's kind of a. Kind of a closed loop system in there. Um. So it's really kind of a, it's a third-party negotiation that the city wouldn't really be a party to, but um. But from an engineering perspective, it's preferable.
And if this only had one entry off of the Thirty Fourth Street. Does code require it to have a second entry? A second access?
No.
So it could only have the one and not link up to the property to the south?
Correct.
Okay, um. Trees. So I don't, I didn't see on any of the drawings where these. Trees that are being um referred to by the residents are located. Do you have any drawing that shows?
I don't have any drawings, but I can show you. So this, this is the picture of um. So I I did a walkthrough of the site with one of the residents of Arborwood and. Um, and we did a a careful walkthrough of the ditch and the northern property line. So these are basically the trees that they're referring to. The ones that are in front of these units.
Oh.
I'm I'm gonna use, uh. Be annoying, I use I use the privilege of running this meeting. Um, are those Russian olives? And is that a farmer's ditch?
Um, I am not sure the species of tree. I believe they were mentioned in the email that we received from the HOA.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Um, and the farmer's ditch is actually, like, this picture is basically taken from kind of the edge of the trees that surround the farmer's ditch.
Does the farmer's ditch have jurisdiction over those trees?
No, those trees are located on the Arborwood property. Over the fence. Yeah, you can see there's a chain link fence there.
Yeah, right there. Okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt your time, ML.
No, no worries. Those are, those are three questions. So um this piece of land that we're, this piece of turf that we're looking at. From where you're standing to that. That, who owns that piece of property?
This is part of the um project site.
Okay, so really that those trees are along the um northern property line. They are like right at the property line. Is that correct?
Correct.
And the issue is, my last question, um, the multi-use path that is being proposed. Currently, it is a um, it doesn't exist on. Uh, the area, the the path that this is supposed to connect to doesn't exist. It's a future proposed path. Is that correct? On the master plan? Um, so the potential for this to be tweaked a little in its location. Is that possible? I mean, because that connecting doesn't exist yet.
Right, yeah, the path would basically go right across this turf where you're seeing, and it kind of connects to um. What's basically like a dead-end street in the mobile home park right now.
Right.
Um, but there is, you know, there's the ability, there is some flexibility in terms of um connections in the TNP. So the path could, you know, the 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 exact alignment of the path can be moved a bit.
Right.
I think as long as it connects to where it's supposed to connect to, there's definitely some flexibility in terms of how it travels through this area.
Right, so if the multi, so potentially the multi-use path. Wouldn't have to interfere with those trees that are not on this property.
Yeah, no, I I don't, I don't think that it would have to.
Okay, those are, oh, sorry.
Oh, no, I was just gonna say, um, the applicant may wanna um talk further about this, but there's also, you know, potentially some. Um, landscape buffering requirements we could add, or, you know, some some various things to kind of um increase the buffering between the path and those and the Arborwood condos.
Right, I, yeah, I think what I was hearing was that the multi-use path was gonna require taking out the trees, but I'm. I'm hearing that that's not necessarily a given.
No, and I don't think that would be the case anyways, because those trees are not on this property.
Right, right. Great, thank you so much, Chandler.
No problem.
Uh, Kurt, please go ahead.
Thank you, and thanks to staff for the presentation. I have questions about the same. Follow-ups on the same things that other people have asked about. Do you have any kind of a rendering of staff's concept of how this second access that's being proposed? Off the mobile home park, um, the streets would go? Because there are multiple streets in there, so I'm just wondering. Is there any concept about which one it would connect to or which way it would go, or just have you not gotten that specific?
We have not gotten that specific yet.
Okay. Okay. Uh, and then regarding the multi-use path on Thirty Fourth Street. So when I look at the TNP map. As far as I can tell, it's not, it's not specifying one side or the other of Thirty Fourth Street. Is there, is there a reason why it's being required on the west side? Is it? Is it just being required there because the development is happening there? Or i- is it because there's something specific in the map that shows it should be on the west side of Thirty Fourth?
Um, no, it's just because this this property is the one coming in for redevelopment, so that is what kind of gives us the ability to require. Um, that they construct new transportation connection.
Okay, but there's, it's not connecting, currently it's not connecting to anything further south. Right, it would just be this section that would be constructed?
Yes.
Okay, uh, and then also with regards to that. So the design and construction standards, if a multi-use path is required along the street. Is there no requirement for a separate sidewalk?
Uh, that's a good question. I don't believe so. I think usually if we have a multi-use path, it it kind of is intended for to be both the sidewalk and for. Bicycle travel.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, I think those are all my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. Um, Georgie, go ahead.
Yeah, um, just a quick question for staff. I might ask the same thing of the applicant. Um, uh, in our design and construction standards, but also just i- in general, as you work with the applicant. Were were there any opportunities to put the vehicles behind some of the buildings, looking at this? That that the, actually, the 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 thing on the screen here, um. Looks like a lot of vehicles are parking directly in front of the homes. I'm just wondering if there were alternate. Um, discussions around trying to tuck the vehicles behind the buildings. Um, so that the front edge is um a little bit more neighborhood-like.
Um. I mean, I'll probably defer to the applicant to um have them explain.
There's nothing in our standards that requires that, like, you know, not having.
Um, the site review standards do uh say that you need to basically minimize the visibility of parking, but it's usually, it's from the right of way, so. Technically, here they are kind of parking if if the, you know, backs of the buildings are facing Thirty Fourth Street and they're parking in the front, they're minimizing parking from the view of the right of way. Um. And I.
Okay, so your, our our purview really stops at the right of way, not not going back in 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 a case like this where.
I mean, we have, we have some discretion to to ask them to make parking less visible. During site review.
Um, Laura, go ahead.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up on the questions about the multi-use path across the north edge of the property. Um, in some of the letters that were submitted by uh neighbors. It sounded like there was a question or people had the impression that the multi-use path would be. Half on this property and half on the Arborwood property and could potentially require taking out their fence. I think I heard you say, Chandler, that the multi-use path on the north edge would be completely on this property and not half and half. Did I understand that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, so it'll be completely on this property. Their fence is safe.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll follow up on that. Sorry, I'm still on trees. The, I think. Looks like those are Russian olives. They, it sounds like they don't mind perhaps if those are removed, but they also planted a bunch of crab apples. Are those crab apples on? This property that we're talking about, or are they on the adjacent property over the property line?
I I would assume they're on the adjacent property, um.
I would assume so as well, but may maybe the applicant can speak to it as well if they have a survey.
As far as I could see during the walkthrough, it was really like the fence, starting at the fence, it was um just grass.
Starting at the fence and then coming on to this property that that we're looking at the overview of, like, from here.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the tru- the the trees were on the other side of that chain link.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Chandler. Cool. Any other questions from board members? I think our next step will be public comment once we're finished with questions for staff. Looking for.
I'm I'm sorry, Lisa, do we go through the applicant presentation first?
Oh, yeah, you're right. Thank you. Yes, Laura. Yes, yes. Applicant presentation. Questions for applicant, then public.
And they've been voted, they can go ahead and bring up their presentation.
Thank you, Vivian.
Hi, everyone. I'm just gonna get a second to um share my screen and make sure everybody's seeing the correct thing.
Thank you, Erin.
Okay. Now, is everyone seeing the slide without the notes?
Yes.
Okey-dokey. Okay, thank you all very much. Um, Chandler, thanks for that presentation, and I appreciate. Being able to, we all appreciate being able to present this to you tonight, uh, because we're very excited to show it to you. Um. We've got a great team. Um, we've been working with Boulder Housing Partners. Uh, I am, I'm sorry, I didn't introduce myself. My name is Erin Bagnall. Principal at Sofer Spahn Architects. And we're also working with Studio Terra on landscaping and site works. For the civil and stormwater and utility design. So um our team is here tonight. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer. Um, whatever, whatever you have, and I'm going to hand it over to Laura Scheinbaum. From Boulder Housing Partners, uh, to introduce Boulder Housing Partners, the applicant.
Thanks, Erin. Uh, good evening. I'm Laura Scheinbaum with Boulder Housing Partners. It's great to be in front of you this evening. Uh, it's been a minute since we've been here, but I wanted to assure you that we're. Been busy building some of the things that you guys have approved for us in the past couple of years. Uh, just a reminder, Erin, maybe you could go to the next slide. Um, we are the housing authority for the city of Boulder. Uh, we are an owner, uh, not only a developer, but owner in perpetuity, um, property manager. We provide resident services. Um, we're a champion of the environment. We also have a voucher program of about fourteen hundred units, and we are currently at about. and we are currently at about sixteen hundred units total in our portfolio for um city affordable units. Um, we're busy working on some projects that are a little bit different than the one you're seeing from us tonight. Um, so we've got sixty units of senior housing coming up in South Boulder. Rally Sport is about to break ground next uh next month, uh, it's about a hundred units of more of a workforce style housing. And then we have seventy-three units that we're in the process of financing over at Diagonal Plaza. That'll be family um units that are, uh, again relatively dense, um, in their, in their nature. So we're excited about Orchard Grove because it's a little bit um less dense, it breathes a little bit more. We have a focus on larger unit sizes, um, community spaces, gardens, um, and just trying to provide different products that I think that we've heard that the city is looking for in terms of of variety for affordable housing. Um, so all of the the metrics we've gone through already, I did want to mention in terms of community engagement. We, we have noticed, we have an interest list, we did send out some notice to people that have expressed interest in the project in the past. That's that notice, notification did go out also from B H P. Um, and we have gotten some, we've done community engagement, done some um surveying and polling, and Erin's gonna talk a little bit about that here in a minute, but um, we, we feel like we have reflected back to folks some of the things that we've heard. Um, and one of the biggest ones is that buffer with the um open space and having a wildlife corridor along that ditch area. So I think some of the decisions that we've made and um perhaps even the parking, the visibility of the parking is sort of a intent to keep that um to the east and and have that um wildlife corridor supported along the ditch. Um, it's also a preservation of some of the trees that are in that area. Um, so we look forward to uh your feedback and your comments, and I'm gonna hand this back over to Erin and um let her walk you through everything, thank you.
Okay, so moving forward, uh, you've seen this Chandler did a great job, so some of these things are gonna be um, a little bit repetitive, but as you can see, the project site is a relatively rare, empty site. About four and a half acres in Boulder, central Boulder, so um it's just east of, or sorry, west of Foothills Parkway and the rail and um just north of the Boulder Junction, uh, phase one. And as, as Laura mentioned, um, we did a recent outreach, um, B H P, I believe, has you, has owned this property since twenty eighteen or twenty seventeen, I'm gonna get that wrong, but they've owned it for a while, and so they, they've done a couple outreach, um um, events, but this recent one um was more comprehensive and had everything to do with um, how, what you're seeing tonight, and the design that was chosen to be put in front of the staff and planning board for concept review, so um, B H P did a, an organized online uh survey. And people were given lots of questions, and they were given lots of opportunity to comment, and what came out of that study was um, a majority of people wanting the townhouse style concept, which is what you see today. So just some, a high level stats, it's about a four and a half acre site, there's gonna be forty-four affordable housing units. Seventy percent of the entire site is open space, a lot of that is a result of the zoning. Um, but regardless, it's a nice stat. Uh, we are, as Laura mentioned, um, going to preserve the what residents term the wildlife corridor, it is a ditch, but it's also a very um nicely inhabited and used um riparian area, so we are excited about being able to improve upon that and um preserve it. There are twelve buildings, there's fourplex, mostly fourplex, and then two duplex buildings. Um, we have a community center and playground, sixty-five off-street parking spaces, um, you might have seen in this, in the site plan, there are also um on-street parking spaces along both sides of thirty-fourth street and a community garden. So one thing about our design and our concept is, that's important to note, is the scale and how it works well with the existing neighborhood. And um, as we mentioned, the manufactured home part to the, that it's surrounded by on the west and the south. And then there's lots of variety of um multifamily apartment-style housing all around it, and um we believe that the Orchard Grove typology fits very nicely transitioning in the middle of it. Um, so a couple of things about the site plan, I'll, I'll go over my spiel about um, the preservation of the, the wildlife corridor, and it, and this de- definitely ties into George, your comments about the parking, um, if you could see, I don't know if you guys can see my arrow. Pause, okay, so there, the, the site plan's nice, the buildings are nice because they're two-sided, so they have a front-facing um, part porch, and then they have a back-facing porch because um of the nature of the site, the this, the porches along thirty-fourth street are all hiding the parking um lanes or access areas in internally. Um, likewise, the, these front sides of the interior units will front a a path in a landscaped area and have circulation north-south through the site. And then the parking would be in their, their back entry doors. So, two-sided sites, the parking is relatively concealed, especially from the public right of way. Um, the multi-use path that you're seeing along the north side, um, and also along, coming down north-south along thirty-fourth, and it wraps over, these are all results of, you know, we've all seen the transportation plans and their lines on a map, so this is our um concerted effort to make the best multi-use path connector from the mobile home park to the south, up towards Howard Houston Park. And then also um an east-west connector that I believe connects to Glenwood um Avenue and that east-west portion of things. Um, so you can see in here, we have, we're not, we're staying far away from the, the existing ditch and the riparian zone, and um our hope is that that's noticed by the neighbors and the community. Um, and will be appreciated. Uh, another interesting thing about the site is that we're designing for modularity, and um we're exploring modular constructions so that we can find the efficiencies in construction, especially on the site where it is a special opportunity to have a empty site, and it's gonna decrease construction timeline and um find economies of scale, and hopefully become a model for how to do this more in the future in our city. Um, you've seen this before from Chandler, so it's, it's a we're trying to economize and make um a distinction between the buildings, but at the same time find ways of of um capitalizing on the modularity, so there'll be our different articulations of each fourplex, and we'll start to develop that as we go into the next phase in site review, so um, you'll see more of a building design and how we make more of a neighborhood um the next time we come in front of you. Um, these are all some views of the site to, from the southeast. Area view from the southeast, from the west, we were just looking at this on Chandler's screen. Some views about, of the gardens and the community space and the clubhouse. So we, we'll just briefly touch on the um single access and um recommendation of transportation staff to change to one access, and um I believe, uh, it's been my understanding through the years that a lot of the time the single access is a, is a result of try, of safety. So they're trying to minimize crossings and, um, especially of multi-use paths, which we do have going north-south along um thirty-fourth street, so um true, if we were to have two spots, we would cross the um multi-use path twice. So I think in the next um iteration, we'd probably need to explore one access point, um and slightly rearrange, as you, as you noted, um, we'll have to move the community building. But one thing I did wanna note is that um it's s- slightly contradictory, because if we were to go towards the south, we would also be crossing a multi-use path. Um, so we'd be adding one if we were to, and, and again, there's a lots of challenges to crossing into private property and streets that are owned by the city. So that's all we have, thank you, and we're here to answer any questions that you might uh want to ask. Thanks.
Thank you so much for that, um Kurt, I see your hand up, please go ahead.
Thanks, could you return first of all to that previous slide?
Do you guys see my screen still?
Uh, we see some interesting three D shape.
I think it's just your desktop.
Sorry. Okay, previous slide, sorry Kurt, um, it's gonna be.
It was the last one showing the, this, the, this, the other access concept.
Gotcha.
Yeah, that one. So you said that this would cross a multi-use path?
Yeah, we have, so the, in the transportation master plan, there's a connection that they'd like to make on this, from this side of, from, basically from um Orchard Grove Mobile Home Park to this path up here. If you see my, can you see mine?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so in, in the transportation master plan, it basically is just a swath across the site. Um, but in our plan, we're bringing it along that su- southern edge, and then up the thirty-fourth street to connect.
I see, I see, okay, understood, thank you, um. My, my other question is about I guess just sort of your approach to the access to these buildings, so if we stick with this rendering here, this perspective rendering. The, the, these, these units, these buildings that are on the east side, you consider that east facade to be the front side, right? But you're not showing any sidewalks, access sidewalks from the street to the front doors.
Correct, 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 um, and that, that's gonna be another le- level of um development as we move into site review, there's um a lot of rain garden, stormwater that will have to occur in this area, so we'll have to figure out how they work together. But we, we would also intend on developing that streetscape for pedestrian.
Okay, and what about on the west side also? The, the westernmost, the, I think, two westernmost buildings, their quote-unquote, front entrance is on the west side, but currently there's no path shown there on that west side. So, again, would you imagine access to the front? To the, to the front doors of those?
Yeah, I think there's probably gonna be another level of um connection path, and if we, so if we the the each, each living room, as I said, if you look at this site plan, or this, sorry, this floor plan, the parking is on this side. And their back porches, it's, it's meant to be architecturally affronting element, but it really is there. Um, it's not their front door. Their front door would be closer to their parking spot.
So, okay, so you're not actually expecting people to go in their front door? It's more an appearance of a front door?
Correct, where it's, we're trying to promote the neighborhood and the um, the pedestrian experience along the green space.
Yeah, okay. Uh, another question about the parking, I think in the memo that we got, you showed sixty parking uh spaces, and that's what I counted, but then in your presentation, you said sixty-five? Did you add some?
Yeah, we have sixty parking spaces, and we have five around the community's building.
Okay, so, so those, the, along that north-south, yeah, right there, okay.
Yeah, right around here and here.
Okay, gotcha. All right, uh, I think that's all for now, thank you.
Um, Lisa, should I go ahead?
Sorry, my, these are going in and out, please go ahead, and then after you will be Laura.
Thank you, um, so I'm gonna follow up with those questions, there you are, Erin, hi, Erin, thank you for your presentation, um. So I don't see a building section. Um, I think that this idea of the porches is kind of it, it's um, interesting in a, and kind of confusing, because I'm seeing those porches coming like off of a bedroom, off of a kitchen, and that's what was being proposed, so where is the, I'm looking at the floor plans. Where are the garages?
Um, where's the parking spaces?
Right, aren't they garages, aren't they attached garages?
They're not, no, there's just, uh, if we go back to the, the site plan.
Right.
There's on-grade parking in front of this side of their entry.
Oh, okay, so that was what you meant by saying two-sided fronts or something. There's porches on both sides, there are no garages, it's on-street parking, you would enter, uh. So, when I'm looking at the typical ground level, there's one side that shows the kitchens, and one side shows the living rooms. Where is thirty-fourth street relative to this plan?
Uh, thirty-fourth street in this plan would be on this side.
So.
So we have kitchen, kitchens on the street.
Kitchen and bedrooms.
And better.
Um. And the parking would be off of the living room side.
Correct.
Um. So the, the community could happen either end on the bigger unit, but probably will only happen off of the living room side, insofar as interaction with your neighbors. Um.
Yeah, um, fair, fair enough point, and that's really just a, you know, restriction of the floor plan.
Right.
There may or may not be another way to organize that, and we can take a look at it.
Right, okay, um, so let me see, you said that the project resulted from community input. So, who's the community?
Uh, I, I'm gonna hopefully draw on Laura, your memory of this, but I can speak to it if you need.
No, I'm here, um, yep, we have an interest list, so we sent out survey information to the interest list, which also included all of the mobile home park of Orchard Grove, so we have connection to the manager of the Orchard, um, mobile home park. Anybody who is on our interest list was also sent information, and then back, um, before the pandemic, we, we did pause during the pandemic, the progression of the, the work here, but we um, did some onsite meetings that, you know, the entire neighborhood was invited, um, including San Juan del Centro, um, neighbors to the north, and then the, the mobile home park um membership.
So it sounds like B H P, the B H P community plus the adjacent people.
So there's no B H P community here currently, we just own the land, so we just everybody and the neighbors, yeah.
When you said your interest.
Oh, the interest list, right, would be people that um signed up on our, on our website, correct, yes, thank you.
These are all for sale, is that correct?
No, they will be rental.
Oh. Okay, um, so let me see. How close are amenities to this project? I E, we talk about the fifty-minute neighborhoods, we talk about, you know, being able to walk to I didn't see um, where's, I know, I guess there's a bus on Belmont, where's the closest services for this? Um, what would be the fifty-minute kind of circle and what's in, in, in that?
I can speak to this.
Oh, thank you Erin.
So if we, you see my screen, and this is the project site.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's, it's very nicely located along an existing multi-use path, so if you were to hop right on the um, I don't know what this path name is, but it go, it links up to everything. You can take it around here and go to. You can take it around here and go to the Safeway on Iris and Twenty-Eighth, and all of the development that's happening at Diagonal Plaza. You can take Thirty-Fourth Street South and link up with all of the development that's happened at Boulder Transit Phase One. And then a little bit further to the Pearl Street and the Whole Foods and the YMCA, and all of the amenities around that. So I feel like it's it's very close, especially it's walkable and very bikeable.
Do you know where the sort of fifteen-minute line goes? Does it capture?
I mean, I I don't, ML, precisely, but just because I live in this area of town and I walk, ride my bike all the time. I think in fifteen minutes, you could walk to Whole Foods.
Okay.
You could walk to Safeway.
Got it. Yeah, okay, I think that those were my questions. I was mostly curious about these double porches. Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you, Laura. I see your hand is up.
Thank you. I'm gonna have lots of nice things to say in the comment section, but I have one question quickly, which is I noticed that all of the units are one and two-bedroom. And when we talked with Michelle Allen, she also talks about demand for larger units, like three-bedroom units for families. Was there any consideration of building some of these as three-bedroom units, given that, you know, the density is fairly low because of the open space requirements in this zone? So I didn't know if this might be an opportunity for some of those slightly larger units, or if those are elsewhere in your portfolio, or what you're thinking about that is.
Erin, you want me to hop in here?
Uh, yes, please. I mean, I can answer, but.
Yeah, I think we are planning on some three-bedrooms is my recollection that we had that conversation and they were supposed to be incorporated at some point. So whether or not they were in the packet or not, I don't know that for sure. But yes, I think the intent is to have some of those three-bedroom units, larger family size. Certainly, it's a site that would be really conducive to family life, you know, with the community center and playground and, you know, again, access to the open space and the multi-use paths and all the amenities that are nearby. So yeah, I think that's a great comment and certainly something that we we see demand for. It's, we don't see as much as people might think we do for the three-bedroom. It's actually one of the harder product types for us to lease. But once we do find the right family, generally they stay for a long time. So our occupancy rates are quite high for the three-bedroom units that we have in our portfolio. So we'll be excited to incorporate that at this this location as well.
Great to hear. Thank you. That that was it for me. So back over to you, Lisa.
Laura. Do we have any other comments? Or questions? Yep, I just saw a hand. Let me scroll back. Charles, please go ahead.
Hi, Lisa, that's me. I just wanted to respond to Laura's questions about the pending zoning code changes for permanently affordable housing. So there's no changes proposed for the RM1 intensity standards, and the exception for site review requirements is proposed for one hundred percent middle residential housing developments where no modification to development standards are requested. And all the units are townhomes duplexes or attached dwelling units locating located in buildings that have no more than four dwelling units. Those would be the projects that are exempt from site review. So I think in this case, this would still knock this one into a site review.
Okay, thank you, Charles.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Charles. All right, any other comments from or questions from board members or from staff? All right, let's go ahead and proceed now, I believe, with public comment. Please raise your hand if you're interested in speaking to this item specifically.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to remind members of the public, if you wish to speak, to please indicate your first and last name. And if you're not sure how to change it and you wish to speak, you can also send it to me through the Q and A. So first up, we have Greg Varhola. Please go ahead, Greg. You have three minutes.
Greetings. I'm Greg Varhola, resident of Arborwood, thirty-two fifty O'Neill Circle, Boulder, Colorado, eight zero three zero one. I have no financial interest in the Orchard Grove neighborhood project. I'm speaking as a resident owner at Arborwood and former HOA president. Regarding the public notification. Regarding the public notification. There was, I don't subscribe to the Daily Camera and our Board of Directors of our HOA, and neither our management company were contacted directly by BHP or the city about this project. There's been no signage adjacent to our property regarding this upcoming plan. And there have been no, no presence from BHP or the city at our HOA meetings since twenty eighteen. I and Arborwood residents have a deep concern about the multi-use path planned for the area on the south side of our property. The current maps cite the path at the property line. And as I've seen in BHP's presentation here, the multi-use path is sighted straddling the property line on both BHP property and Arborwood property. The maps that I've seen tonight clearly show this. A fence and a line of mature trees are right there. The potential loss of the fence and the trees could jeopardize a fundamental pillar of our community, and that's security. We have seen the unintended consequences from bike paths in Boulder. We experience them every day. Because of this, the security fence and trees at the south property line of Arborwood must stay. They are vital to the security of our community. I urge the current design to be reevaluated and the sighting of the multi-use path clarified and the maps revised. We're all in the same boat. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Greg. And I do not see any other hands. Maybe give folks a couple of minutes. Okay, we have Alfred Shock. Alfred, please go ahead. You have three minutes to share comments. Just have to unmute from your.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to clarify the issue about the trees that you saw in the photograph. You saw the big swirly brush-in olives. Those are embedded in the in the chain-linked fence, but I think the majority of the root stock is in BHP property. Between those two olive trees, you might have noticed a green tree. And there are nine of those that are planted. We planted those in twenty fifteen. And they're now over seven inches in trunk diameter. That's our concern. There is, there, excuse me, there is no room. It's only six feet to the property line. There's other other items like the location of a fifty thousand volt line. You would have to put, and we have a slope there, you would have to put in retaining walls. It would be a mess and we'd lose the trees. There's, all they, all they have on their side of the property is the open field. I don't know if the bike path, excuse me, multi-use path, re- retracts from open space. I don't know if 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 that extra six feet for the length of the property is inflicting in a negative way the open space commitment. But that's the choices between having twelve feet instead of six feet on their property, or you tear down the trees. That's, it's a pretty simple, thanks for the support. You guys are doing a great job. I know your hands are full. That's enough. But I was involved with this project from the get, and boy, the only the only way I knew this was coming was the city has a nice mailing list. And I'm on the neighborhood, so I I knew right away and I try to help our board. Thank you very much. That's all.
Thank you so much, Alfred. Thank you for coming and sharing your comments. Anybody else from the public wish to speak now? Just go ahead and raise your hand so we know to call on you. Okay, thank you, Chair.
Great, thank you so much. We're at seven-twenty, so I'm gonna go ahead and call a nine-minute break. We'll come back, eight minutes now. We'll come back at seven-thirty, and then we can discuss. So thank you so much, members of the public for speaking, applicant and fellow board members, and we'll be back at seven-thirty.
So cute.
Sorry, we've got, we've got a. Kurt, I don't see you back, but I see your hand up, so I don't know if the hand was still left up or if you had something you wanted to say?
Sorry, hopefully you see me now. I just had a follow-up question to the applicant based on the public comment. Would now be an appropriate time for that if we're reconvening?
I think so, unless somebody corrects me, that that seems fine.
Okay, great.
We don't, we don't have George back yet.
Oh, we don't have George, you're right.
Yeah, if you wanted to wait just a minute to get George. Or I I don't mean to interrupt Lisa, you're chairing, so if you want to keep, move forward, please go right ahead.
I think we'll wait till thirty-two and then whether we have George back or not, we'll, we'll have Kurt ask this question, but we can wait, you know, another thirty or forty seconds, whatever that is.
There.
All right, go ahead and proceed, Kurt.
Okay, thank you. So applicant, you heard the questions from the public about the exact location of that multi-use path on the north side. Do you have any response to that and whether it would be half, you're imagining it half on your property and half on the adjoining property or all on your property?
Yeah, I'm, I can think that. We are happy to have the multi-use path be all on our property. I just, there's, we've, we see nothing wrong with that, so I think that should be assured to the, to the neighbors. That being said, I will just point out to the board that this is one of the, one of the stricter open space requirement zones and he, I mean, he was right to mention, does the multi-use path count towards open space? I actually don't know if it does, and maybe Charles can comment on that, but regardless, we are down to the nitty-gritty on our building footprint and the amount of, you know, drive access that we can't part, count towards open space. And even though we have, you know, seventy percent open space, that gets us forty-four units. Any negative in the other direction could potentially knock off one of those units. So I will be able to manage it, and I, I think that the, the neighbors to the north should be assured that that will work with them. But I just wanted to say to the board that this is one of those open space restricted zones that's not being changed in the land use code with the ordinance. That still has a very strong open space requirement. That is restricted to number of dwelling units.
Kurt, did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, and then I had a follow-up to staff based on that. Is the open space requirement something that we can vary with site review in this own district? No, okay.
All right, thank you, Kurt. Staff, did you have any further response or anything? You don't necessarily need to weigh in, just you got mentioned, so I wanted to give you space if you'd like to take it. Okay, Charles, you just came off camera.
Nothing from staff.
Okay, okay, thanks. All right, and I think that means we are ready to have board discussion. Could we perhaps get the two two prompts back up on screen? To help guide our discussion. And again, I just want to remind everyone we are at concept reviews. We're trying to provide useful feedback and information and our takes on this. We will not be taking a vote.
Sorry. Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, Shannon.
You wanted me to pull the key issues slides back up?
Yeah, key issues, that's what I meant, yeah. Thank you so much, Shannon. I was like, the things, the prompts, stuff. Key issues, one and two, I think, to help guide our conversation. And I haven't spoken a whole lot tonight, so maybe I'll kick off. I'll just say, yes, I do think it is generally compatible with the BBCP. I could go into more depth, but other people perhaps will, will do that for me, so I won't get particular. I think, yes, it is generally compatible. And then the feedback that I would offer is that I'm seeing some good things happening. And I sure would be interested in any ways that we could handle that multi-use path specifically to protect those crab apples or otherwise alleviate some of the neighbors' concerns, while keeping in mind the importance of trying to keep units in place. So in other words, I'm sympathetic and empathetic to some of what the neighbors are bringing forward, and it would be a shame to have outside impacts on trees they planted and watered and kept alive on their side of the property line if we can find a way to work around it. Other board members, if you would like to speak, please start raising your hands and we'll go through. And probably what I'll do, guys, is I'll go through everybody, once, perhaps everybody twice. And then, you know, listen, listen for what other board members are saying. Try not to repeat either yourself, as I sometimes repeat myself, or repeat other board members except to agree. And perhaps we'll get out of here at a nice reasonable hour. All right, I'm just going off of who's in front of me on the screen, so Laura, please go first, and after you will be ML.
Thank you, and I will try to be efficient as well. So for key issue number one, I agree that, yes, it is generally compatible with the goals, objectives, and recommendations of the BBCP. I thought staff did a bang-up analysis, starting on page seventy-four of the menu, and cited about a dozen or more policies that this is helping us get toward. I mean, especially, I love how this is providing housing for low, moderate, and middle-income households. And that this is an appropriate location for the type of housing that is proposed. I do agree that it's a great transition, so I agree, number one, yes, it is compatible for all the reasons staff said on page seventy-four. For key issue number two, feedback on the conceptual site plan and building design, I have just a couple that I'll try to go through quickly. So again, very supportive of the town home design concept. I love the modularity and the use of I assume you're gonna use that modular home factory that we're, we're trying to build if, if it's available. And trying to be a model for that. I love that concept. Thank you for paving the way there. And I am very supportive of trying to add some three-bedroom units, depending upon the demand that you're seeing for them. I think that's a great idea. Those are so scarce, and this seems to be a good location, given that you know, you can only build so many units, and that's your limiting factor rather than the footprint of the buildings. So seems like a great, great opportunity for that. You talk about off-street bike parking, and since Mark McIntyre can't be here tonight, I'm gonna channel him and say, you know, you say that you will meet the requirements for off-street bike parking. We always like to see more if possible, if that makes sense, I think, especially around any community center or common areas. I know that when I was living in multifamily housing, you would often invite guests to come and join you, to grill out or, or to use the amenities. And sometimes those folks are riding by bike, so probably the residents will largely want to keep their bikes close by, but that off-street bike parking would be great for visitors. I do appreciate that you're maximizing the amount of units you can put on this lot, totally supportive of that, and would not like to see any of them go away if you can avoid it. And very supportive of your stated desire to work with the residents in Arborwood for some buffering for that multi-use path and to have it completely on your property. It sounds like that is sort of the major bone of contention here and that you have a good plan for how to address it. Very appreciative of that. And lastly, I'll just say, I'm not sure I entirely understand staff's logic for wanting to connect to the Orchard Grove Mobile Home Park through this property. They mentioned in the memo that they want, it's mostly because they want the Orchard Grove Mobile Home Park residents to have an additional exit. But this part of Thirty-Fourth Street is a dead end, and it just exits back out onto Valmont where they already have two curb cuts quite, quite close by for the Orchard Grove Mobile Home Park. So I'm not sure that there are many residents of that mobile home park that would head north through your property and come back out on Thirty-Fourth Street only to end up back on Valmont, pretty close to where they would exit anyway, so maybe there's some emergency use I'm not understanding, but I would love to get more information from staff about why they see that as a desirable connection. And I don't know that many of your residents are gonna wanna travel on those very slow-speed, private streets with lots of children playing to exit directly onto Valmont. I just don't know that we get used that much, so I will stop there.
Thank you. ML, you're up next, and we'll have Kurt.
Thank you, Lisa. So, regards to key issue number one, BBCP, I think I do appreciate the extensive list that staff has put up regards to what is being addressed. And I do agree with most of it. The only question I would have would be the neighborly quality that is the result of those double porches. I, and so, number one, yes, I, I think it does meet the requirements for Boulder Valley Comp Plan. My concerns lie in key issue number two. Where I think, I think that the porch face off of a bedroom. I understand, well, I don't sure that I understand, but the idea of having sort of two public places, two public faces, maybe creating more of a sense of community by seeing all these porches. I, I think that that needs, needs some further thinking about how it's gonna be used. And what is facing on to, or what, what the community itself, and I'm, I'm thinking about how the people, the residents that live in that housing development, how they will interact with each other on those sidewalks that are yet to be developed, and how those porches actually will help create community. I greatly appreciate that you've got, you know, the gardens and clubhouse and all, but the idea is that people will be walking and will be, you know, going from A to B, and hopefully will be walking to amenities because it is within a good, a reasonable reach of, of amenities. So I think that that's an important part. And I think that the actual functionality or what's really going on with those porches, as opposed to, you know, just having a facade of a porch, how they're gonna actually be used. I think that would be an important thing to pursue in your, for, for the next. And to that end, I would consider going to DAB to get their input about the double sort of porch side concept. DAB is the Design Advisory Board, and I think that they might be able to give some input a whole other perspective about that, so. The other, I, I agree with the multi-use path. I think we have to be very careful to make sure that the neighborhood is heard and that trees aren't removed and that there's enough of a buffer between the path and that that existing neighborhood to the north. So it, it sounds like you have a strategy in place to deal with everybody, but you know, when you come back, we'll absolutely be looking to make sure that the neighborhood to the north has been listening and that that is, that that is resolved. And lastly, I will also speak to the entries. I, I think it'll be kind of a challenge to be bringing people through that existing neighborhood to the south. So I don't know. Again, I'm not exactly sure. I don't, I think that the staff was making a, a recommendation. But I'm not sure that it is, it would get to a better, a better circulation to go through that neighborhood to the south. And then you'd have to rethink your community space and all if it was just one entry, so. I guess pursue that deep, in, in however it needs to go with staff, but I don't see any overriding reason to not have the two access points as you're showing. I think that there's complexity either way, as you pointed out. So I, I'm, I'm not I'm not leaning to, you must follow and, and get rid of the two on Thirty-Fourth. I think I would say you have options available there still and consider, considering that. And I think that those are my input comments to you. Just think about how people are gonna actually use those paths on the site and how it's gonna become a community. And the idea that we've got, you know, an, an all affordable housing project in Boulder, I mean, this is what we we look at all the In-Lu's and write, this is the, where the In-Lu's land, so I appreciate Boulder Housing Partners and the project, and I look forward to seeing it come back inside review. Thank you.
Thank you, ML. Kurt is next, followed by Georgie.
Great, thank you, Lisa. I want to second others' comments about the unit types. I think that it's great to get these kinds of more family-friendly units that, you know, we've, we've expressed a desire for, for quite a while. And it's great to see them happening. I'm hopeful that we'll end up with actual families here with kids. Which, you know, we, we need more of, obviously, there are a fair number of those at, at San Juan del Centro. And I think that this would complement that really well. I wish that we could get more on this site, but that's not what their current zoning allows. My main concern with the project relates to the, the general layout and the large amount of just pavement in the center. So I imagine being a kid living in maybe the southeasternmost of these buildings and wanting to go meet a friend who lives on one, in one further to the, to the west, say, and in between, it feels like there's practically nothing but pavement. There's a, the pa, the, the playground, which is paved near the clubhouse, which is great, great to have a playground, but the, the best spaces for kids that I've seen, and I've seen this in, for instance, university family housing in, in places in the United States, and I've seen it a lot in Europe. I was just in Europe and just, just got back about an hour ago. And I saw it in developments in the Netherlands and also in Slovenia where we were, where you've got a central green space and then housing around, arranged around that that provides sort of a enclosure of the green space, and it's a great place for kids to, to play. So if I had my brothers about this, and if I were interpreting, for example, the comp plan when it talks about onsite open spaces under policy two-point-four-one and hence designed for all projects. And talking about incorporating well-designed functional open spaces. I would move the parking further to the outside, maybe mostly to the north. And, and then arrange the buildings around the, a central green space, perhaps with a club, clubhouse and with a, a playground to really provide a space that could, a, a, a great community space. I feel like the, the parking certainly is not a great community space. The drive aisles are not a great community space. The community house should be a great community space, but it's not very, it's not really central. It's not sort of a natural place if you're a kid to necessarily meet other kids. And it's not very large, and we've got a lot of space. As you said, we've got seventy percent open space on this side, and a lot of it is not so usable, but there's, there's room for, I feel, really high-quality open space that, that is, could just be unstructured play space for kids. But I'm not seeing that happening, and I think primarily it's because we're bringing the parking right to everyone's door and that because of the amount of then access, drive aisles and so on that that requires it, it, it breaks up the, the green space and really doesn't, doesn't allow for it. So other people on board may not a, agree with that, but, but that's a significant concern for me about the general site design. I do also agree with ML about the, the design with the porches. I've, I think form should follow function, and I, I, I like the idea of creating certainly a a, a street skate feel, you know, with, with a feel for porches, but if they're just basically fake porches that probably people aren't gonna use and are gonna get all dusty or filled with old furniture or, you know, for storage or something. I don't feel that that's productive. I would love it if we could have really active front porches. But the design as it currently stands is not encouraging that. I see very inactive front porches. And then active parking spaces, which is not really, I think, the design that the comp plan or site review criteria are aiming for. So I have concerns about that. Regarding the accesses, I don't have a big problem with taking two accesses off of Thirty-Fourth Street. I certainly understand the concern about multiple crossings of the multi-use path. But But, but I think that this multi-use path is not going to get a, a ton of use, even if it were completed. It's an important connection to have, but it's not gonna have a huge amount of use. But I think it would be great if we could get a a pedestrian or possibly bike connection to the southwest through Orchard Grove. Because I think a lot of people are going to be inclined to walk, for instance, to the little convenience store that's in the gas station at the, what is that, the southwest corner of Valmont and Thirty. Or, or to some of the, the shops to the west of there, there's a a, a meat, the meat store and some, some other, I think, fairly affordable shops there. I think those are going to be pretty primary destinations. And it, we, it would be great to have a fairly direct and convenient walking route through those, through, basically to the corner, towards the corner of Twenty-Eighth and towards the corner of Valmont and Thirty. And as it stands, I think you, you would have to walk out on Thirty-Fourth and down, basically the same way you would drive. And if you're gonna walk the same way you drive, you're more likely to drive, whereas if the walking route is, feels more quicker and more direct and maybe very quiet through Orchard Grove, I think that that would be great. Whether Orchard Grove would allow that, I understand, is a whole different question. But I would love to see us explore whether just, just a, a small bike pad connection across there would be possible. And I think those are all my comments.
Thank you, Kurt. Georgie, you are up next. And if people have anything further to say, you can start thinking about raising your hands again as well.
Cool. As, as relates to number one, I agree, it needs the plan. Appreciate all the effort that's been put into this so far and it's nice to see a development that a little bit more spacious and targeted maybe a little bit more towards family. I think that's, it's been lacking. What we've seen, that's great. As others have mentioned, like to echo, it makes sense to make sure there are larger, you know, three-bedroom units and involvement like this. It sounds like that's already being taken into account. Also concerns are into account and we'll get some further refinement there, so I, I don't need to say anything about. I I really agree with what Kurt was saying around sort of the missed opportunity on the site relative to creating some, some, some more ability to activate spaces, especially in this I, I don't think that, what Kurt was saying, I don't think that the parking needs to, needs to drive up to every unit, especially since there aren't, there aren't garages connected to these units and it's really just surface parking. I think that parking, the unit layout could be reimagined a little bit where you could create some real active central green spaces off of that, off of that clubhouse where the parking is in the center. I just think that's a, it's a huge opportunity for the site. We've certainly got enough room to work with it and, and maybe actually even save some, some drivelanes, some asphalt drivelanes because of consolidating parking. It, it's not defined, the porches to me are not defined enough to understand how active or inactive they would be, but I, I also am sensitive to what Kurt and ML brought up with that, because I think that that's also potentially an opportunity, but I think that also kind of relies back on to where you guys had as you kind of refined this design along with what with what you guys had said about connecting the, the porches with sidewalks and how this all, there, there's a, there's a pedestrian connectivity level of the plan not clear to me. But I think maybe through some sort of further refinement would, would, would get me there. But overall, excited to see the project, excited about the modular component of it. Excited to see some larger units for a family and some, some, some quality open space. I just hope we don't miss the opportunity for the quality open space to really quality space. And, 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 and I, you know, what Kurt said to me resonated a lot in that I think the center of the site could be, could be reworked and not have parking there, but rather, rather, a lot of open space connectivity there and as a hub for the, for the units following it there. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. I'll weigh in again and just echo a few things that I heard, a lot of wonderful comments, including, oh, small child, including that I think the open space could be a bit more inspired, I guess. I realize that we have various constraints we have to work within. But I agree that, that it kind of feels like a lot of, a lot of pavement and not somewhere you'd want people to concentrate, especially children to be living. Yeah, I think that's the thing I most wanted to emphasize. All right, does anyone else have anything they'd like to add? I'm gonna scroll and look for any hands up. Okay, in that case, I think that concludes this item. Well then, thank you so much to the applicant and to staff for presenting today and answering our questions. We look forward to seeing how this moves forward. And yes, Kurt, I have a, I have a matters item in a moment, but go ahead, Kurt.
I was just wondering if we should ask if this, if the applicant needs any clarification, often I think that.
Yeah, yeah, sometimes they have additional questions. Yeah, if applicants or staff have anything they feel we haven't provided or something you'd like clarification on, please feel free to speak now.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. No, I, I, I think those are all great, great comments and we'll, we look forward to developing the concept more and bringing it back for site review.
Thank you, Erin. Yep, I agree. And yeah, we will accommodate the multi-use path, so we'll, we'll work with the neighbors and then I would just say in terms of access through the mobile home park to the south, we will reach out and see what kind of opportunities there are there. It's hard to draw on somebody else's property, as you all know, so we will, we will do our best to see what kind of partnership we, we may or may not be able to achieve with them, but I know that they are open to conversation, so that will be reflected on our next round of submittals.
Wonderful. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
All right, I think with that, I will proceed to matters. So we do have one item, I believe, from staff. And staff, I, I may ask you to speak to this, Brad, I think this is you, but we are in need of a delegate from planning board to speak at city council. And in a moment, Brad, I'm sorry, I'm gonna ask you to repeat what the two items are they wanna hear about. I've gone straight out of my head. And Sarah will still be traveling for work in DC. And unfortunately, the time when at least one of the items is likely to come forward, again, this is this Thursday, the twenty-first, I will be at a back-to-school night, so I will not be able to go either. So Brad, could you speak to what exactly you need from us and then perhaps we can see about selecting someone?
Sure. Some of you may know that the council, a couple of council members meet and they rotate every Monday morning to look ahead to the following agenda. This, it's called the council agenda committee. Might have that somewhat wrong. At any rate, at this Monday's meeting, the couple of council members in representation asked if it wouldn't be possible for a representative planning board to be there this Thursday. The two items are first, the Boulder Junction two plan amendment that you've seen, and then secondly, the zoning for housing affordability that you've recently seen as well. There is at the top of the agenda, an allotted hour for public comment. They've not always been reaching that hour, so it is possible that these items could come up as early as, I wanna say six forty-five. It would also be fine if the person representing the board was simply available virtually. Hearings are in person, but for that type of secondary support, virtual participation is fine. Typically, we would start with the chair representing the board. But as Lisa indicated, she's not available and nor is her mistress, so it's open, open nominations or individual volunteering.
Go ahead, Laura.
I would like to nominate Kurt if he's willing to accept, since he was our representative on the multi-board working group for Boulder Junction. And I also think Kurt has a really good grasp on the zoning for affordable housing, perhaps a more detailed grasp than, than many of the rest of us. So that's my nomination.
Thank you, Laura. And Kurt, would you like to accept that nomination? That doesn't mean you're necessarily selected yet, but you could accept or decline.
I'm looking at my calendar right now.
I was gonna say, yeah, check your calendar. We all need to. And Brad, I, I apologize that so many of us aren't available, I think. And, and this is a criticism, it just came up fast and so.
Sure, I was gonna say, it's kind of a last-minute request. Sometimes they anticipated a few weeks in advance and just didn't happen this time.
I could make that work.
All right, would anyone like to nominate anyone else or nominate themselves? Or should we perhaps proceed with Kurt's willingness to give up that time on his Thursday?
I'll, I'll second the nomination.
Nomination. All right, we've, we've got a nomination and acceptance and a second. Anyone else have anything to say to speak to Georgie?
Thank you, Kurt.
Yeah, all right, great. Do we need to take a formal vote or can we just say that we approve of Kurt as our appointee? All right. Yeah, unless Hella says we need to do something, I'm gonna say, we, we picked Kurt. Let, let the record show.
And Brad, if you have any more information on specifically what they're gonna be looking for?
I, I don't. Yeah, I don't, just to be available to speak to maybe some of the comments from the board, both. And, and some of those were split votes, so it'd be to any of the positions. I'll send you the meeting and you can contact me, Kurt, for any issues.
And I think any of us would, would do this and Kurt, I, I have genuinely have full faith that you, you of all people will, but whenever we go and especially when it's a tricky split vote, you always wanna represent the board as a whole and kind of be like, well, some people are, you know, saying this and, you know, so you have to be that representative. Cool, great. All right, are there any other matters? I never remember the order of matters, but are there any other matters from staff? Matters from legal? Matters from fellow board members? No, Hella, please, go ahead.
Oh, no, I was just saying, thanks for checking in, but no matters from.
Oh, good, okay, cool. Fellow board members? All right, oh, yep, I see a hand, Laura.
I'll just follow up on, you know, another one of these split vote items. The recommendation from planning board about the CIP regarding the airport items, there was a recommendation to try to delay accepting FAA funding where possible in twenty twenty-four until council has had a chance to fully process the public inputs and hear back from staff on their questions and give direction about the future of the airport. So that item, I believe, will be discussed or could be discussed this coming week as council deliberates on the budget and any requests that they have for budget changes. I did hear back from Natalie Stifler just today that their intention from transportation is to avoid taking, incurring any additional FAA grant obligations to the extent that they can do that without pausing work that would be essential for safety especially. So I think they're trying to thread that needle. I think that they, you know, have received feedback, they have listened. And, and I think they're kind of on the same page with, we don't wanna incur a lot more FAA grant obligations if it can be avoided. But also not, certainly not wanting to hamper the operations and safe maintenance of the airport. So we'll see where that lands, but I'm encouraged.
Thank you for the information. Anything further from fellow board members or anyone else who hasn't gotten to share something they were hoping to share? All right, I'll declare this meeting adjourned at eight oh six PM.
Great job tonight, Lisa.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Good night, everybody.